And welcome to the public hearing on the 2017 capital improvements budget. I'm Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, present pro temp of Columbus City Council and Chair of the Finance Committee. I'd like to thank you for joining us for this discussion on the 2017 capital improvements budget. I'd like to recognize my councilmembers who have joined us today. Councilmember Mitchell Brown, Councilmember Shannon Harden, Councilmember Gisele Page, Councilmember Michael Stenziano, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. So, thank everyone for being here this afternoon. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. What is the capital improvements budget? We are here today to review the 2017 capital improvements budget. The capital improvements budget represents a city's strategic obligation to maintaining and improving its streets, its roads, sewers, parks, buildings, and other infrastructure. The investments are community-focused and symbolizes the city's commitment to improving the business climate and maintaining quality of life for all of our residents. This proposal prioritizes jobs, safety, and neighborhoods. The total sum of this year's capital budget is $861.4 million. Funding will be used for infrastructure projects, public utilities, community recreation, and other city-owned facilities. The new funding for the CIB is $542.7 million, and $359.9 million of this amount, or $63.3, is supported by enterprise revenues and miscellaneous smaller revenues such as in the internal service fees, federal and state funding sources, and not the set aside of income taxes. Of the total, CIB, $318.7 million is carryover funding. A substantial portion of the CIB supports water, sewer, and stormwater. Considering the deteriorating infrastructure that many cities are experiencing, I am pleased to say that we understand the importance of ensuring water and sewer safety and the benefit of this to our residents. With also this 2017 CIB, the city did well with its efforts to leverage funds particularly with regard to public service projects. The administration has demonstrated success in accruing state and federal support for a number of projects. This will result in the city's contributions of just hundreds of thousands, leading to the investments of millions of dollars. For example, the project to Wyandore Road on the north side, a project which will significantly decrease congestion, is funded at $190,000. Moreover, MORPC is providing an additional $21.5 million in funding towards this project. Another example is $1.2 million for improvements to Hamilton Road, which MORPC is contributing $19.9 million. And then, there's $400,000 for a project on Allen Creek Drive, which MORPC is also, we're putting in $400,000 in this budget, and MORPC is contributing $13.2. But perhaps the most significant example of the leveraged funds is the Smart City Challenge. The $2 million contained in the proposed CIB is part of the city's ongoing commitment, for which we will receive matching funds in excess of $300 million to both public and private support. Columbus is one of the best-managed cities in the entire country. We continue to be one of the largest cities in America to receive a AAA bond rating from all three major credit rating agencies. And I appreciate that we may be able to make, and we are able to make, capital improvements that enhance and maintain infrastructure that's critical to the quality of life, living for all of our residents. So, I would now move on to today's presenters. First, we will have an overview from Director Joe Lombardi, as well as representatives from the city departments, which will highlight portions of the proposed capital improvements budget, which is relevant to their departments. We will then hear from the councilmembers, who will speak to their projects they are supporting in the capital budget. So before I begin, or you begin, Director Lombardi, I want to thank each of the departments, and the mayor, and his team, for the spirit of cooperation that's been exhibited to get us to where we are today. And with that, the floor is yours, Director Lombardi.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, members of city council, for the opportunity this evening to present the 2017 capital improvement budget. Before we begin, I would like to take this time to thank a few people. I want to thank Mayor Ginther for his leadership. Also, I want to thank President Klein for his leadership on city council, along with President Pro Tem Tyson and your leadership as Finance Chair, and all the councilmembers for your leadership in your particular committees. I also want to thank our department directors and their staffs, the city auditor's office, and my staff, especially Rob Newman and Kyle Seaver, who really do all the hard work when it comes to this CIB. They do all the heavy lifting, all the last-minute changes, all the last-minute, "Hey, can you do this for me?", and they really do a bang-up job, and I wanted to thank them this evening. My presentation will include the difference between the capital improvement budget and the capital improvement plan, an overview of the 2017 capital budget, and then an overview of the Department of Finance and Management's budget. After I've completed my presentations, my colleagues here this evening will have an opportunity to discuss their particular budgets in more detail. As I said, I think it's very important to distinguish the difference between a capital improvement plan and a capital improvement budget. The capital improvement budget, or the CIB as it's better known, is the current year capital needs for the city departments and addresses those projects earmarked for the coming fiscal year. The CIB is approved by city council in the form of an ordinance. On the other hand, a capital improvement plan, or a CIP as it's better known, is a five-year long-term plan, which projects future capital needs of the city of Columbus. The CIP is actually six years. It's the current year CIB plus five years of the planned projects by city departments. The CIP does not authorize the appropriation of funds. City council adopts the plan via a resolution. The city continues to maintain a AAA bond rating under the steady leadership of our city auditor, Mr. Dorian. Two important factors have attributed to the protection of this AAA bond rating. Number one, since 1956, the city has in place a policy to set aside 25% of the income tax collected to be deposited into the Special Income Tax Fund, or SIT, primarily to pay for non-enterprise debt. Enterprise debt, which includes water, sewer, stormwater, and power, is paid through their user fees. The second factor is that the city seeks voter approval for issuing debt typically about every three to five years, most recently in 2016. Since 1956, the city has sought voter approval 96 times to issue debt for various purposes, and the voters have approved those issues 90 times. As Mr. Dorian would say, that's a phenomenal track record. Generally speaking, over 70% of the general obligation debt is paid off in about 10 years. At this time, I will present an overview of the 2017 CIB. The capital improvement budget is developed over time, and the process includes meetings, revisions, identifying priorities, and a tremendous amount of collaboration between not only my office and the departments, but with city council and the city auditor. In an effort to lessen the need for new money, therefore lessen the debt of the city, the departments were asked to review their funding sources and identify current funds that could be canceled or repurposed. This effort resulted in a very good carryover mount for this budget year. I would like to thank the departments for their work in that endeavor, and appreciate them working with my staff in doing so. Budgets are about priorities, and this budget continues to invest in Mayor Ginther's three top priorities: neighborhoods, neighborhoods, neighborhoods. The 2017 CIB addresses health and public safety, roadway infrastructure, recreation parks, public and private partnerships, and utility and infrastructure improvements. The type of projects traditionally funded by capital funds include the design and construction of facilities, such as police and fire stations and pools, citywide resurfacing, sidewalks and curb replacement, bikeways and playground improvement, street scape projects, fire apparatuses such as medics, engines, and ladders, refuse collection equipment, economic and community development, and lastly, water, storm, and sewer upgrades, and streetlights. When the CIP is developed, we take into account two components: new funding and carryover funding. The carryover funding are dollars from prior year that have not been encumbered, or that have been canceled and are re-appropriated for future use. When all funds are considered, the 2017 CIB submitted to city council totals $861.4 million. This amount includes $318 million of new funding, or $322 million in new funding. However, when loans and public utilities are considered, the total new funding is $543 million. The total carryover is $318.7 million. Just to note that the loans that I talked about are not included in bond sales. Those are considered new money. We go out for loans each year for public utility projects. The funding for the projects within the 2017 CIB will come from proceeds of a future bond sale in those loans that I spoke about. The totals, as I mentioned, are further broken down by funding sources as follows. The SIT-supported portion of the budget totals $348.6 million. That includes $165.7 million in carryover, and $182.9 million in new funding. Our enterprise fund, which consists of water, sanitary, stormwater, and power, is budgeted at $260.8 million, which includes $125.8 million in carryover, and $135 million in requested new dollars. This amount does not include the OWDA loans from the state of Ohio. For 2017, the Department of Public Utilities is requesting approximately $219.8 million in low-interest loans. As I mentioned earlier, all the enterprise debt, including the loans through OWDA, are supported by the user fees and not by income tax. Our internal funds are those funds that our departments charge back to other city agencies for services such as technology and fleet management, totals $18.8 million, and includes $13.7 million in carryover funding, and $5.1 million in new funding. Lastly, another source of funding includes what we call permanent improvement funds, which include sales of city assets and some miscellaneous deposits, and that equals $13.4 million. This entire amount is carryover money. That will conclude my overview of the 2017 citywide CIB. As I had mentioned, my colleagues here this evening will give more details of their particular budgets shortly. I would ask, if I could, if I could go on and discuss the Department of Finance and Management's 2017 CIB. Thank you. The Department of Finance and Management has a new funding CIB totaling $8.9 million. Some of the highlighted projects include, $7.4 million is allocated for the renovations of city facilities. Some projects include HVAC repair or replacement, elevator service, flooring, minor repairs, and plumbing. Within that $7.4 million, the department has included $2.3 million for facility improvements at the municipal courts building. Fleet management has $1.5 million budgeted for construction of a new compressed natural gas, or CNG, station on the city's west side. This station will be used for public and city vehicles, and will improve the city's carbon footprint. Those are our highlights of the Department of Finance and Management. I want to thank council again for the opportunity to present an overview of the 2017 CIB and my department's budget. In closing, I again like to thank Mayor Ginther, city council, the city auditor, department staff, and my staff for their support, leadership, in working together to develop what I consider a very fiscally sound CIB. The full CIB and CIP can be viewed at www.columbus.gov/capital. I will answer any questions that any councilmembers may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I have one question, and this, and the question is, is, tell me about the additional funding for the municipal court renovations, and can you discuss the long-term plans also for the courthouse?
Sure. Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, and other members of council. The city is responsible for the upgrades of the facilities out at the municipal court building on High Street, I think the 369 High Street. We have allocated this year $2.3 million to do some facility upgrades, including new carpet, looking at the restrooms and upgrading the restrooms. We're also looking at potentially trying to get some new furniture, especially in the areas where the general public sit and wait for court cases. Our short-term plan is to get a lot of those things done within the next probably 12 months. We have a midterm plan that goes to about 18 to 24 months, and then we have a long-term plan that obviously will be more larger projects. We have shared that vision with the judges. We are to meet with them, I believe, next week. We're going to sit down with them and discuss our plans, and have their input, and work with them throughout this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Stenziano, you have a question?
I had a similar question, and I appreciate the department's ongoing work with the judges and the environmental court in terms of their concerns about the long-term plan. So appreciated the ongoing discussion and collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. And Director, I'm also very pleased that we're continuing on our investment in CNG. I know gas prices were coming down, and I think they're going back up, so it's important to continue to have that investment in CNG. CNG, CNG, thank you so much. All right, let's move on to public safety.
I just wanted to conclude by thanking you again for your leadership of the Finance Chair. I know it's not an easy committee to have, and I hope I'm easy to get along with, so...
Thank you, you are. Thank you. All right, our next presenter is going to be Kate Pishati, Deputy Director from Public Safety. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Pro Tem Tyson and councilmembers. The Public Safety Department's proposed 2017 capital improvements budget is focused on a key priority of the mayor: protecting Columbus's neighborhoods by building new police and fire facilities, purchasing new fire apparatus, and upgrading radio communications equipment. The 2017 public safety capital budget proposes $18 million in new funding. This funding can be broken down into four general areas: new police and fire facilities, fire apparatus replacements, communication improvements, and safety facilities improvements. In this budget, $6 million is set aside to build a new police station in the Polaris area to serve Precinct One. The Division of Police Far North Substation is presently located at the corner of Carl and Morse Road, over one mile from the geographic service area of Precinct One. This service area has experienced significant residential and commercial growth over the past several years, resulting in a significant increase in calls to the Division of Police for service. This project will prevent the city's reliance on townships to cover city jurisdictions. $2.5 million is allocated in this budget for the acquisition of land for a replacement Fire Station 16, and a brand-new Fire Station 36. The city's Fire Station 16, currently located on East Weber Road, was built in 1953. Due to changes in fire and EMS practices, equipment, and vehicles, the existing station is nearing the end of its useful life as a fire station. The present site is too small to allow for expansion of the existing building and cannot accommodate an adequate number of parking spaces to meet operational needs. A site has been identified, located at 1465 Oakland Park Avenue, that meets the location criteria of the Division of Fire, and is of adequate size to accommodate construction of a modern fire EMS facility to serve the North Linden area. The city is also currently looking to purchase land for the construction of a brand-new Fire Station 36. City of Columbus continues to expand, and the response time to the outskirts of the city becomes longer and longer. This project will prevent the city's reliance on townships to cover city jurisdictions, and the project will begin as soon as a decision is made on a location. The department proposes a total of $6 million in new funding for the purchase of fire apparatus. In 2008, a vehicle replacement standard was adopted, and the Department of Public Safety has made significant strides in replacing out-of-life cycle vehicles, units outside the scope of the replacement standard. To date, the Division of Fire has all frontline vehicles within the standard adopted by the city, and is very close to having all units within the same standard. This is a programmatic and marked improvement in the fleet for the division, resulting in more reliable and newer equipment on the street, ensuring optimum response times for the division. With this funding, the division will procure one ladder, five engines, and six medics. The capital budget also proposes $3 million for police and fire facility renovations. While considerable investment has been made in new facilities over the past several years, there remains a significant need to upgrade parking lots, generator replacements, window replacements, roof repairs, and general facilities improvements. Finally, the capital budget proposes $500,000 for the annual replacement of police and fire radios. This is an annual expense that keeps police and fire radios in the best conditions possible. The Division of Police has approximately 4,000. The Fire Division of Fire has 2,200 portable, mobile, and RF-control-based 800 megahertz radios in operation. In the year 2017-2018, approximately 2,700 of these radios will be 15 to 18 years old and will need replaced. Thank you so much for your time and having us this evening. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Director Pishati. And something I was going to ask you about the considerations that the public safety will take into consideration when they're deciding to either build a new fire station or a police substation. I think that you shared that just in your comments, so I appreciate that. And I also thank you for really sharing that, about the $6 million for new equipment, and it's $2 million apiece for medics, platforms, and ladders. The last question, and I'm going to ask you this one question, can you discuss how the department is able to undertake, you know, major initiatives such as new fire stations, new substation, body cameras, without causing disruptions in service or coverage?
That's a good question. I would say as far as the building of infrastructure, we work closely with the Department of Finance, who has excellent staff, who make sure that we line everything up, and select land, and get things built, so that there is no interruption in service. We have a great partnership with construction management. And the body camera program so far has run very smoothly, as far as getting all the infrastructure up and going. I'm sure there's still some unknowns as we get more and more of the technology online. But so far, we've just had great partnerships with other departments who've helped us navigate through.
Thank you, Deputy Director Pishati. And I'm going to ask, I know that I mentioned that my council colleagues would have an opportunity after the presentation to be able to share any of their projects for this budget. I know that Councilmember Mitchell Brown has to leave early to pick up a very important person, and so we want to allow him to just really share what his addition is to the budget at this time, and ask any questions, too.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Again, on behalf of all your council colleagues, we want to say thank you to you for your leadership and direction in keeping us all on track with regards to this capital improvement budget. I think we have one amendment specifically in public safety, and that amendment is a $225,000 request for an inventory control system in our Fire Division, for our fire emergency medical personnel. This medical supply dispensing system is called controlled access pharmacies, which will allow our emergency medical technicians to restock the units around the clock while providing real-time centralized usage and inventory tracking. As you've already heard from Deputy Director Pishati, our EMS activity is increasing. Our response times become more and more dramatic, and our ability to restock our vehicles becomes more and more significant. Currently, we have it at a central location. This is going to allow our medics to be able to stock at different locations around the city, at other fire stations, and we're really excited about being able to try this pilot project out to see how it's going to work. I would also point out that I think it's significant for this council and for finance, is that as we begin to expand in our Fire Division, not only are we looking at the brick and mortar of a facility, but we also have to have the staffing. That is very, very important. We can't build it unless we have people to be able to man it. And so, as I reach out to Director Lombardi to point out to him that not only do we want to be concerned about where we're at from a brick-and-mortar perspective, as I said, but we're going to need the staff to make that all happen, and I know that Director Lombardi will make sure that happens. So with that, I want to say thank you, and I appreciate having the opportunity to go forward.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember Brown. I have been told that certainly the police station, that certainly the staff that's currently, that the current station will then move to the new facility, so we certainly have to have an addition of other new officers for that, but certainly recognizing the fact that if we have a new fire station, that there will be some operational costs that will go along with that, so...
Well, absolutely. Anyone that's as good-looking as Mr. Lombardi, I'm sure can make that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any questions for Deputy Director Pishati? Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Deputy Director Pishati. Our next present speaker will be from the Department Development Director, Stephen Shoney. Good evening.
Thank you, President Pro Tem, members of council. Let me begin with my thank-yous. Let me start by thanking Bill Webster, and Hannah Reid, and Rory McGinnis, my team who've really helped on putting this together. I also want to thank all of my committee chairs, and I'll thank Councilmember Stenziano, too. I'll skip Councilmember Mitchell Brown since he left the room before I started to speak. So I do, in all sincerity, want to thank each of you for the support and attention that you give to our department. We really do feel like it's a partnership with each of you, so thank you very much. I will do something I don't usually do, which is actually read from a script as I'm addressing council, because we do cover a lot, and I want to make sure we get the facts right on this. However, I will apologize, I chose to do this on the day that I forgot my glasses, so if I get something wrong, you'll have to excuse me. The Department of Development uses capital budget funding to support our mission and programs by, thank you very much for the teamwork over here, by leveraging private investment to create jobs and grow neighborhoods. Projects funded through the CIB include public-private partnerships to encourage commercial growth, demolition of vacant and abandoned housing, residential renovation and preservation, construction of major roadway infrastructure that supports development projects. We evaluate our programs annually and update our five-year plan accordingly. Our process involves assessment of CIB funding levels, projects requesting funds, and our own operating capacity. There are always more projects that can be funded, and we have to make tough choices, and this is a year where we did have to make some tough choices. Our 2017 capital budget improvements request is $32 million. This includes $14.9 million for community development initiatives, and $17.5 million for economic development and job creation. For our community development initiatives, we're proposing the following: $7.9 million to continue the construction of Poindexter Village. This includes $5.7 million for roadway improvements, and $2.2 million for housing. $1.1 million is proposed for the Poindexter Village African-American History Museum. $1.1 million is proposed for the Poindexter Village African-American History Museum. This is in addition to the $7.9 million needed for infrastructure and housing. I believe we have a speaker who's here tonight to talk a little bit more about the progress on this. Our budget includes a lot of big items, but I think the fund stuff in our capital budget and frankly, our operating budget sometimes are the smaller, more community-based projects, and this is one that we're particularly excited about. And I will also just say, our funding for this will come in at a critical piece in a critical time to help us get started and bridge us to some of the things the history connection is going to do, the Ohio History Connection is going to do to leverage other funds and really make this happen. So this really is a critical piece, and getting it into this year's budget is very important. We have $2 million for housing preservation to increase the local supply of decent, safe, and sanitary housing and decrease the number of vacant properties in our neighborhoods. These funds will assist homebuyers, renters, for-profit and not-for-profit developers with grants for residential projects, including both affordable and market-rate housing. We have $350,000 for emergency shelter repair to assist in the repair of emergency shelters serving homeless individuals and families. Repairs include but are not limited to ADA bathroom improvements, roof replacement, and repairs to kitchens, bathrooms, and dormitory areas. $3.5 million to support our vacant and abandoned properties efforts. Funds will be used for demolition and stabilization of structures, including asbestos abatement, demolition, pre- and post-demolition, or lot restoration, and similar improvements. Last year, we demolished 305 vacant structures, and since 2012, we have demolished 945 structures. We focus on demolition because that's where you see the most dramatic improvement, but know that we are focused very much on stabilization and saving houses where we can. For our economic development and job creation initiatives, we are proposing the following: $5.9 million to get us started on improvements at the Olentangie River Road and North Broadway interchange to make that massive project possible. $3.5 million for neighborhood infrastructure. $1 million for our public-private partnership or P3 program. This program is a cross-departmental program designed to fund, manage, and coordinate infrastructure improvements, supporting job creation, and leveraging private sector investment. We have $50,000 for Economic and Community Development Fund. These funds will be used to support neighborhood and community economic development projects. In addition, development coordinates the city's Urban Infrastructure Recovery Fund, or UIRF, and Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization, or NCR, programs. Altogether, we have $7 million allocated to these programs. Many of our projects involve multi-year timelines and commitments. I'd like to mention a couple of the projects that we recently committed. The streetscape roadway and traffic signal improvements on 11th Avenue from Grant to Pearl complete the redevelopment of the Columbus Coated Fabrics site. The city contributed a total of $22.9 million and leveraged an additional estimated $281 million in private development funds for this former development site. This is the kind of leverage we look to achieve with our public-private partnership programs. These are investments that we make to allow the private sector to then come in and transform things. I often talk about, we don't do anything on our own. This is a great example of how we have to come in early, bring at-risk capital so that then the private sector can come in and follow and leverage those assets that we put in. We're putting in $6.8 million to extend Easton Square Place from Steltzer Road to Morse Crossing, including a shared-use path, sidewalk, street trees, and new street lighting that opens up additional development space. This project allowed for Alliance Data Systems to do their expansion, which is bringing several thousand jobs to the eastern area. In addition, by them moving across the street, that opens up a great building that we're out on the street marketing right now, that hopefully will be bringing another tenant in to backfill the space that they were in and creating more jobs in that area. These are just some examples of the types of projects that we're doing and the private investment that we leverage. This concludes my summary, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, President Protam. Director Shoney, the $3.5 million that you cited in neighborhood infrastructure was part of your economic development allocations expenditures. And so I'm curious about, I assume that means the $3.5 million in neighborhood infrastructure is directly tied to a job creation component, so I'm curious as to how you are measuring that job creation for every dollar spent.
Sure, we measure things a couple ways. One is we measure job creation. So we look at, can we tie a project, can we tie a job creation project to a specific investment we've made? Then we also look at how much capital has come in. Sometimes the job creation really doesn't work, because we spend a lot of money on infrastructure related to housing investments. So I think a great example is what I talked about earlier with Columbus Coated Fabrics. There's some job creation there, but really the story there, same thing with American Edition, same thing with Poindexter, is not so much about the job creation. There's job creation in the construction and those kinds of things. It's really about the rebirth of a neighborhood and the repurposing of sites. So when we look at Easton Square Place, yeah, we can tie that to jobs, and we can say, that's one where truly, but for the investment in the road, ADS doesn't do that project there. Alliance Data Systems doesn't do that project. But for the investments we're making at Poindexter and Columbus Coated Fabrics, the neighborhood doesn't regenerate and become, in the case of what's happening in Wieland, the really strong neighborhood that we're seeing today and what's happening at Poindexter where we're seeing people start to move back in, you don't see the potential that we're having in, and same thing with American Edition.
So the way we should really be looking at this is separate and different from our incentives, where a company is promising a job creation target, we are looking more at broader, longer-term, like, environmental economic impact.
Yes, in some cases, this is as much about community investment as it is economic development, and you really have to look at each investment separately. Some are very clearly tied to economic development, whether it's ADS or whether it's the investments we talked about just a couple weeks ago, maybe it was even this week, we did, the dollars that we're contributing to the Rickenbacker redevelopment. That's where really you can see direct jobs tied to it, and I can give you a number on those that says, we made this investment, we now have nine regularly scheduled flights in and out of Rickenbacker, and we have the new cargo terminal that's generating this amount of activity. I can give you those economic development numbers. When you look at those other examples that I cited on the neighborhood side, it's not a direct jobs impact, it's more a community development impact, which I would also say really, if you don't have, as we all know, if you don't have strong neighborhoods, you can't attract people, and in today's economic environment, if you cannot attract talent to your community and you cannot keep the talent that you have, you do not attract companies.
Thank you. Thank you, Protam.
Well, thank you, Director Shoney. Just really appreciate your efforts to support neighborhood redevelopment. All neighborhoods, thank you for that, and so appreciate your hard work and also how you're leveraging our dollars and with the public and private partnerships. So I appreciate your work. Thank you. Our next speaker will be the Assistant Director from Public Service, Assistant Director Steve Wensel. Good evening.
Thank you, President Protam Tyson, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly about the Department of Public Service's proposed 2017 capital budget. Our proposed new funding capital budget of $123 million will invest in roadways, sidewalks, bikeways, bridges, and other projects that will improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods, making them safer for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. So the centerpiece of Public Service's capital budget is a $33.5 million resurfacing program. Of that $33.5 million, $28.1 million will go to resurface more than 301 streets or 203 lane miles throughout Columbus, with over 86% of these streets on residential roadways. $1.5 million will improve approximately 27 miles of alleys across the city. Another $2.5 million will be for concrete repair. Approximately 3% of the city's roadway network consists of concrete surface. A majority of these streets are either residential, commercial, or industrial streets. This part of the resurfacing program will ensure that these concrete streets receive appropriate maintenance necessary to extend the pavement life, improve safety, and meet motorist expectations. The preliminary estimates include the rehab of 32 residential concrete streets and four industrial concrete streets. Another $500,000 of the resurfacing program will provide for citywide curb ramp replacement or new ones, and another $886,000 will be for urban paving projects. These are joint projects that we have with ODOT to do some of our urban paving or paving within the urban environment. A few examples of some of the streets we'll resurface in 2017 is North Moore Place from Olentangie Boulevard to High Street. This is in the Clintonville area. Richardson Avenue from Sullivan Avenue to Broad Street, this is in the Hilltop area. Joyce Avenue between Hudson Avenue and Agler Road, this is in the North Linden area. And Forest Street from Grand Avenue to Parsons Avenue in the near-south area. Also included within the 2017 capital improvement budget for Public Service are other major type of roadway improvement projects. First is the Cannon Drive Project. This is approximately a $40 million leverage project with OSU, the city share being $12.8 million, and will relocate the existing infrastructure of Cannon Drive between King Avenue and John Herrick Drive to accommodate future development. Cannon Drive will be shifted west from its current location, and adjacent streets shall be adjusted accordingly. The next major project we have is the Livingston Avenue Phase C project. In this phase, the roadway will be reconstructed and widened on Livingston Avenue from Fifth to Kennedy. Grand Avenue will also be widened to accommodate a second southbound turn lane that turns on to Livingston Avenue, and we will also resurface Grand Avenue between Livingston and the bridge just over 7071. That Grand Avenue Bridge will also be replaced as a part of the ODOT 7071 project this year. Additional improvements will include bike lanes, curb extensions where parking is permitted, new sidewalk, intersection upgrades, and streetscape improvements. New storm sewer and street lightings will be installed, as well as all utilities will be relocated underground. The last of our major type in projects for our 2017 capital improvement budget will be the Short North Phase Two and Phase Three roadway improvement project, which will redevelop High Street from West Popular Avenue to Seventh Avenue. Sidewalks will be removed and replaced with a decorative finish. The existing curb line will be relocated to increase the sidewalk width and narrow the roadway section where feasible to help with pedestrian safety. Where full-time parking exists, curb extensions will be installed. Landscaping will be upgraded throughout the corridor, including street trees, green infrastructure, and plant beds. Storm sewer adjustments will be necessary to accommodate curb line shifts. The pavement will be milled and overlaid for full, within the full limits of the project, and pedestrian crossing facilities and traffic signal upgrades will be made throughout the project. Also this year, to make neighborhoods safer, the department proposes to invest $7.3 million in the city's pedestrian safety, operations safe walks, and bikeways program. One of the projects includes the Mound Street project, where this will construct new sidewalks and curb ramps on Mound Street between Benz Boulevard and Wayne Avenue. We also have the Ekin Road Sidewalk Project. This project will install sidewalks on both sides of Ekin Road from Salisbury to Hague with straight curbs on both sides and drainage improvements as needed. The final sidewalk project that I'm going to detail out will be with Wilson Road Shared Use Path. This is a $1.1 million project. It will construct shared use path on the west side of Wilson Road from Sullivan Avenue to Broad Street. Finally, in our 2017 capital improvement budget, we propose investing $3.4 million to improve city-owned bridges. The Department of Public Service is responsible for maintaining and improving as-needed 223 bridges owned by the city, and in additional 118 bridges, we provide routine maintenance for the Ohio Department of Transportation. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present the Public Service's proposed 2017 capital improvements budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. My question is with regard to our resurfacing budget, does this funding level, is it sufficient enough to maintain our streets? That's number one.
Well, of course, we would love to have more money to maintain our streets. We have, I believe it's around 3,600 lane miles of streets throughout the city of Columbus, so we could always use more resurfacing money. I think this is good, because I think it's more resurfacing money than we probably ever had in any of our CIBs. We keep kind of inching it up every year to try to get us to the point where we're better maintaining our roads, but I think it would probably be the amount of money we would need to truly resurface all those lane miles we couldn't afford. So we're doing, I think we're doing a good job, we're getting there. We just have a lot of lane miles to maintain.
And so another question I'll just add on to this is that, and how do you determine, then, which streets we're going to maintain as you get funding each year?
Sure. Our street maintenance staff, as well as we have a consultant that we have hired, help us. What we do is we assign a pavement condition number to most of our streets. So the ones with the lowest number are the worst of the worst, and the ones with the higher numbers are the ones that are in better condition. So we'll go out and look at all these different streets, and we'll kind of look, and we develop what we call these resurfacing packages, and we kind of line those up with our bids also. So we look at these packages, and we kind of look at where the city will get the best bang for their buck. So we're taking in consideration all those bad pavement numbers, as well as some other streets that might not be so bad on the list, but they're within the same area so the city can get a better bang for its buck, so we go ahead and resurface those streets while we're at it, since they might not be like a 40-level street, but they might be a 60 or 70. So we kind of package those together so we can get the best price when we go out to bid. But we're starting from the bottom and working up.
Councilmember Shannon Hardin.
Thank you, Chair Tyson, President Protam, for your leadership, and want to add to Mike Collins' comments for guiding us through this process. This question may be a quasi-development, quasi-service question, kind of building off of President Protam's question in terms of how do we pick our areas? How do we go about balancing our leverage projects versus our new-build projects in the capital budget?
Let me, thank you, Councilmember Hardin, President Protam, members of council. The, I mean, really, it does come down to the budgeting. When you look at the projects that are, so the projects that Public Service works through are very much on what Steve talked about in terms of their rated scaled projects. What we have in terms of the 3P and the community projects budget and the UIRF budget are those things that are prioritized for other reasons, and that's really how we've worked out the process. We have a, we honestly do have a great relationship with our colleagues at Public Service and utilities also. Utilities is kind of part and parcel of this whole conversation, Ricken Parks as well. We have these conversations, say, okay, we have these pots of money that are for things that are outside of the transportation metrics, and this is how we decide on them. So that's a great question for this process.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'll add to that. I mean, when we're kind of prioritizing our budget and what we are considering in the unfunded request, I mean, our first priority of projects is projects where we're getting outside funding or leverage projects from ODOT or from Morpse or High Estates. So we're taking into account those projects first, and then in our list, we kind of go down from there.
Thank you. So, and I guess that's what I was pointing to, is that so many times, our investment is part and partial to a lot of different partners' investments into our projects, and it really expands that $33.5 million really into many more millions of dollars worth of investment into our infrastructure. And so, appreciate your leadership, President Protam Tyson. I just wanted to say quickly, because I have to run, too, thank you for partnering with me and adding another $400,000 to the Celebrate One sidewalks projects program as well that is represented in the capital budget. Thank you for your leadership on that program.
Thank you, Councilmember Hardin. It's an important project, and make sure that women, the individuals in our Celebrate One communities certainly have the ability to get to where they need to be based on those projects, so thank you so much. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another service development crossover question, but talked about the UIRF funds, both in the budget and that as a council, we're looking to amend and add more. Could you talk a little bit about that process, what they're intended to fund, and just briefly walk through how those communities are able to pursue the funding and projects?
We have a process that we've worked out with all of the other departments where our planning team, along with the folks in our public-private partnerships team, go out and work with the area commissions to come up with a plan. We work with public service to then typically public service, sometimes utilities, sometimes Wreckin' Parks, to figure out, okay, how do those prioritize and how do those come out best as we go out to try and effectively and efficiently contract for those services? It's a fairly complex process. The best thing for commu, for groups to do is work through their area commission. The area commissions are very well briefed on this process to learn about the UIRF funding. We have a plan. We go back and periodically check the plan because as times change, priorities change, but that's really the quickest summary I can give you.
Councilmember Jaisa Page.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. Just a quick question, Director Shoney. I don't ask many, so I actually get a pass. If there is a, a community that doesn't have an area commission, is it a similar process? Who should they kind of reach out to?
So if they don't have an area commission, they should reach out to Mark Dravilis in the city's planning office. I do not know his phone number off the top of my head, but if you were working with constituents, either have them reach out to Mark or have them just work with Hannah Reed and we can certainly get to folks and walk them through what the process is.
Thank you, Deputy Director Mansol. And I appreciate you, you know, as you went through your list of where we're going to have road and street improvements, I appreciate you stating pretty much improvements in every quadrant of our city. And so that it's important that our residents know that we are focused on improvements throughout the entire city. So thank you for doing that. Our next presenter will be from Public Utilities Assistant Director Jonathan Lee. Good evening.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, members of council, for allowing me to present an overview of the Department of Public Utilities two thousand and seventeen capital improvement budget. The department's capital budget totals four hundred and eighty-six million. This includes three hundred and fifty-nine million in new funding and about a hundred and twenty-six million in carryover funding. These dollars are spread across the city in multiple planning areas. Just a quick breakdown, the stormwater division, we have about thirty-two million dedicated to projects there. Sewers and drains, about two hundred and seventy-five million. Power, about nine million. And water, a hundred and sixty-seven million. Our total capital improvement program, the six-year plan from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two totals two point one billion with, again, the majority of those dollars going to water and sewer. All of these dollars allow us to continue to meet our state and federal EPA regulatory requirements. We also focus on improving water quality and upgrading all of our distribution lines throughout the city, making sure there's adequate pressure and booster stations that are upgraded, things of that nature. Also improving our sewer collection systems as well as providing streetlights for safety and aesthetics. We also are involved in neighborhoods. We have a large stormwater improvement program to mitigate flooding and improve stormwater infrastructure. So as you know, we serve the city of Columbus customers, but also residents and businesses in the suburbs and the county as well. And the majority of our dollars are supported by bond funds and a significant portion from our Ohio EPA loan program. These loan dollars are targeted for construction only and allow us to take advantage of low interest rates and favorable loan terms. And our new funding includes about two hundred and nineteen million in loan funds, about a hundred and sixty-one dedicated to sanitary and fifty-eight million dedicated to water. I'll go over a few highlights by division. On the stormwater side, we've got about twenty-five million in stormwater projects ranging anywhere from one million to three million dollars typically. And a few of those in the Clintonville, we're going to, we have a project along Wraithbone Avenue. Then in the Linden area, we're going to be doing a, a project along Woodward, Wildwood and Woodnell avenues. In the Hilltop area, we have a stormwater project there along Terrace Avenue and Broad Street. And finally, in the Northland area, along Morse Road and, and the front of the Fountain Square Shopping Center, we're going to be doing a project out there. On the power side, as far as UIRF dollars, this, this budget allocates five hundred and five thousand dollars to the Division of Power. So we have several projects lined up that the area commissions have requested streetlights. So we, we plan to engage in those in two thousand and seventeen. Another significant project is a, a need for a new transformer. And we're dedicating two million dollars for a transformer down in the south side near our Jackson Pike wastewater facility. That transformer is at its useful life, pretty much, it's about forty years, so it's time to replace that. As far as a few streetlight projects, we're going to install about thirty-three along Livingston Avenue. South Side Lyons Park, near that area, we have some that are going to be installed there. And along East Main Street, we're going to, that's a UIRF project right there where we're going to add some LED lights. On our sanitary sewer side, as you're well aware, our blueprint Columbus program is fully underway. And this year, we're looking at about thirty million dollars in projects. And we're, we're in the Clintonville area now. We're going to be moving into the Hilltop, the West Franklinton areas. And at the same time, we're doing construction, we're doing design as well. And we're, we're right now under design in the Linden near south, Fifth by Northwest area and the Milford Summit areas. Another major project that I'll highlight that is a regulatory project is a hundred million dollar project out at our southerly wastewater treatment plant. And this project will replace several of our pumps. We have clarifiers out there. We have chemical feed storage facilities out there, and we have to do many electrical and instrumentation upgrades. And finally, on the water side, we, we will continue to upgrade our treatment plants. Those are with current dollars already under contract, but we have several dollars associated with this budget to continue engineering services during construction for those. And as far as our waterline improvement program, we're very aggressive with that, replacing waterlines that are aged and have breaks in them. And so we dedicate typically one and a half to three, three and a half million dollars per project all across the city for those waterline projects. And a new, a new project that we're engaging in is standby power at a couple of our plants to ensure that, you know, if there's any kind of region-wide power outage, that we're still able to adequately be online and, and serve customers. So with that, President Pro Tem Tyson, I'll close my comments and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Assistant Director Lee. One, this is your last comment, I'm excited about this standby power program, ensuring that if the power does go out, that we are, have planned for that and we could still be functioning. So thank you for that. How have our, how has our capital planning efforts helped us to succeed at avoiding some of the utility infrastructure problems, particularly with regard to water quality that other cities have been encountering?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. You know, as I noted, we're very aggressive in our, our change out of our, our water lines. We have a thirty million, thirty, about thirty million dollars dedicated to that annually. As far as on the treatment side, all three of our water plants are under construction right now to improve the treatment processes that we have ongoing to ensure that, you know, we're providing the best water as possible to the, to the citizens. And, you know, as, as time goes on, you know, there's certain things and certain organisms that we have to, that change over time, that those, that's what those new treatment processes combat. And we already have those online right now, so we plan to complete those in the next year, year or two, so.
Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. In learning about the capital budget, it normally forecasts five years out. So some of the projects, particularly blueprint, we're looking ten to twenty years out. How does the department prepare for our, like, our knowing population growth and continuing to make those investments with the anticipation of the growth that's coming, population-wise?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. Councilmember Stenziano, you know, with our long-term plan, we're constantly looking out, not only within the six-year capital plan, but ten years out from our funding standpoint, but we also have an even larger program with our, on our sewer side that looks out, you know, over thirty years. And that, we follow that plan to ensure, you know, on the blueprint, on the blueprint side, that, you know, each neighborhood is, is getting serviced as far as the upgrades that are needed to comply with the EPA consent orders. You know, with population growth, how do we forecast that? We look at some trends. We've seen, you know, maybe half of a percent growth from what I've seen from, you know, each year, year over year. And so we plan for that. We plan for that in our, in our annual operating budget to account for that growth and, and to look at what kind of revenues we need to, to, to service our operating budget. So hopefully that answers your question. I, okay.
And just one additional follow-up was questioned, but I think you actually covered a lot, was just the breadth and diversity of neighborhoods that the capital improvement budgets, particularly with utilities, touches. So if it was water or power, some of the infrastructure pieces, really appreciate the ongoing commitment to all our neighborhoods.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, Councilmember Stenziano. We, you're right, we are all over the city, you know, in our service area for electric service. That's somewhat defined as far as our, our Division of Power, but waterline projects, those are obviously all over the community. And we are investing in, there's growing communities out there in the suburbs too. And so we, we, on the fringes of the, of the city, that we have to invest in, in major sewer and water infrastructure there as well. And as you note, we are undergoing those major improvements at our plants. Those are centrally located, obviously, but yet they have a service area as well.
And our next presenter will be from Recreation and Parks, the Fiscal Manager, Steve Hyland. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to talk about Recreation and Parks Capital Improvement Budget for two thousand and seventeen. This budget allows to help make improvements and upgrades to some of our twenty-nine community recreation centers, over three hundred and fifty parks with eight thousand acres, a hundred and eighty playgrounds, eight outdoor indoor pool and five spray grounds and six golf courses. Our total CIB is forty-three million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Of that, fifteen million, nine hundred and eighty thousand is new funding and the rest is, twenty-seven million, nine hundred thousand is carryover funding. I wanted to go through a few of our major projects and just allow you the opportunity to ask some questions. To start with, we're going to design a new Linden Recreation Center. This will increase the size to approximately thirty-five to forty thousand square feet facility. We're also going to make major improvements to the park. The design will take some, take place sometime this year and the construction will be fall to late two thousand and eighteen. We're also going to make major improvements to the Franklin Park Cascades. For those of you that aren't aware, that was built in nineteen ninety-two under the Ameriflora Plan. It was only designed to last for two or three years and now we're trying to stretch it and stretch it. We're going to do a Phase One to replace the existing pump house. And then after that, we're going to do a Phase Two to go back and fix all the leaks and then either naturalize the stream between the upper and lower ponds or rebuild the cascades themselves and make it a better operating system. Construction will start this year for the Indian Mound Rec Center. That's increasing the size of that facility from ten thousand square feet to around thirty-two thousand square feet. It's going to allow for use of four classrooms, senior programming, multipurpose room, kitchen, kitchen large enough to teach in, new front, front entry lobby and office improved, office space, improved security and supervision, restrooms, gymnasium, fitness room and game room. The parking lot will also be increased to allow for the extra capacity. Again, we're going to make major park improvements this year. Some, some parks to note are Fairwood, Goodell, Westgate, then obviously the Linden Park I talked about and also the Scioto Riverfront Fountain. Major playground improvements at some of our a hundred and eighty playground sites. Crumb, Saunders and Antrim will get playground improvements, also Castum Freedom, Casto, Freedom Park, Stone Ridge. And that's the major playground renovations for this year. We're going to make roof renovations to approximate, major roof improvements of around eight hundred thousand dollars to six of our facilities. We have the continuation of our bikeway program, approximately five million dollars in upgrades, improvements, neighborhood connectors. We're going to start a new program this year, just, it's two million dollars worth of general improvements to our existing rec facilities. It'll do gym floors, HVAC, major painting, lobby improvements, window upgrades. We have so many facilities and we're trying to deal with the budget we are given and we're going to just start slowly and just make some improvements that everybody can see and, and kind of spread it across the community so everybody can see a little bit of upgrade. We're also going to purchase heavy equipment and large forestry vehicles for around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's to maintain the parks, keep the trees in line. We have land acquisition dollars. We have the Emerald Ash Bore project that's still going to continue at seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Approximately twenty thousand trees have already been removed as, as a result of the Emerald Ash Bore disease, and we still have another five to ten thousand trees to take down. And then we also have the Green Initiative to replace trees, probably five hundred thousand dollars is what we're planning in this budget, which will allow for about another twenty-five hundred to three thousand trees to be reinstalled this year. Just wanted to highlight though, some of the major projects. If you have any other questions about our, our capital budget this year, glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hyland. I'm excited about, one, that you just mentioned the two million dollars, two million dollars with the upgrades that will be throughout all of our recreation facilities so that every neighborhood knows that we're doing something to be able to improve them. Also, you just mentioned, and I, that the kitchen at Indian Mound, and I know that the design for the Linden Community Recreation Center, that we are moving towards putting kitchens in our recreational facilities, teaching kitchens.
Exactly, yes.
And I appreciate that. I mean, you know, I, working with my, the council members, we completed a food plan for the city of Columbus and making sure that everyone has access to affordable, local and healthy food. And I believe that, just, I know having partnerships with like local methods and other organizations to be able to help our residents be able to, to eat healthy is important for the, for their overall health and just appreciate that partnership and teaching people how to, to cook and eat healthy. And so that's something that I'm, I'm really pleased about. And so I'm seeing my colleagues, do you have any questions to ask? No. So thank you. And again, you mentioned in the last, that's twenty thousand Emerald Ash Bore trees have been removed and, and looking to need to replace another five to ten thousand of them. And I know my colleagues are certainly supportive of that initiative also. So appreciate all that you're doing in Recreation and Parks. And this last comment is that I've been through Franklin Park Conservatory a number of times. And let me tell you, the number of people that have, if you're walking through, they have stopped me about the cascades. And so I'm appreciative of that. There's a significant investment in this budget to be able to fix the cascades in our beautiful park. So thank you. And our final presenter this evening is from Technology Assistant Director Gwen Acribi Beto. Good, good evening.
Good evening, Councilmember Pro Tem Tyson and other members of council. I want to thank you for allowing me to present the Department of Technology's two thousand and seventeen capital improvement budget. The department's two thousand and seventeen capital improvement budget for new funding totals four million, six hundred and forty-five thousand. And of that figure, breaking it down into four categories of projects. The first one is our fiber connectivity network and infrastructure projects. And that's going to total one million, two hundred and twenty, twenty thousand. Of that figure, seven hundred and fifty thousand is allocated towards fiber connectivity and lateral fiber, lateral fiber connectivity. Four hundred and seventy thousand of that amount will be used for replacement and upgrade of network infrastructure, hardware and wireless connectivity. hardware, and wireless connectivity. Under the enterprise system upgrade and disaster recovery and security programs, projects, it totals to $2,215,000. And that breaks down to $475,000 that was budgeted for upgrades of software, hardware, equipment for the cities' two data centers. $440,000 will also be used to purchase hardware, software, and services for the replacement of the email security gateway and improve city, cities' identity and access management capabilities. $300,000 will be used for application upgrades for the city's GIS website and mobile application. And then a million of that will be used for the upgrade of the city's 311 system. We also have allocated $200,000 for facility renovations. This will allow funding for the continued work that construction management is doing at the Data Center West to renovate the area. They've identified some services that we need that we didn't actually have funding in the first phase of it. So, this will allow us to utilize that funding to continue the work with the parking lot and the sidewalks at that, at the data center. The other remaining $1,110,000 will be utilized for the telephony VoIP, which is the Voice Over Internet Protocol, and the Interactive Voice Response, which is IVR system. Some of the, a lot of the VoIP equipment is at end-of-life, and we will be utilizing $410,000 of those dollars, okay, to replace the end-of-life equipment, and also do an expansion to non-VoIP facilities, okay, to put them on to the VoIP system, and upgrade the functionality to the call center IVR system. The remaining $600,000 has been allocated to upgrade the city's unified communication systems, which is the telephone services, which includes voicemail, the phone system, telepresence, and network expansion to provide standardized collaboration services on a single voicemail system and reduce the expenditure costs for these services. So, that basically identifies how the $4,645 has been allocated to, to be spent.
Thank you, Assistant Director Akrabito, Peto, I'm sorry. In this budget, certainly the upgrade of $1 million to 311 system is important because that's the main access for our residents to be able to contact us if there are any issues or concerns going on into their community. And really, there were, a lot of your other dollars, of course, have been used just for, strictly for communications and just really, and that's important for people to have access to us at the city and, and vice versa. So, thank you very much for presenting this evening. And so, now I would like to, to share some of our council amendments, and my colleagues that are here will certainly share theirs. I am going to continue to, in our effort to reduce infant mortality, put a hundred, have $175,000 to be presented to the neighborhood health centers to be, to purchase the equipment that can be used for like ultrasounds and other equipment that's necessary to, in some of our Celebrate One neighborhoods, add new additional equipment. As Councilmember Harden mentioned, $400,000 to supporting sidewalks in the Celebrate One, those eight neighborhoods. And then lastly, I'm proud to support the administration and with the adding an additional $100,000 to, for the development of the African American History Museum at Point Dexter. Councilmember Stenziano, do you want to state yours?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To go along with the Finance Director's themes, additional funding for neighborhoods, neighborhoods, and neighborhoods. The IRF commitment, working with the different departments, and really being driven by what neighborhoods are looking for. Were those improvements aligned with not only our priorities, but those neighborhoods' priorities? So, look forward to continuing to build that and really get engaged with the neighborhoods on a variety of different specific projects that they would like to see help improve their neighborhoods. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Page.
Thank you, President Protam Tyson. With the Development Department and Housing, we will continue in co-sponsorship with President Protam Tyson, the Learning Skills Lifting Neighborhoods Grant Program. We hope to get about $200,000 for this program for nonprofits that are working with either youth or ex-offenders to rehabilitate houses within their community. We, last year, we did $100,000 and had three award winners, one of who is here this evening, who will speak with us briefly, and are really excited about continuing that program and growing it. And thank you, Director Shoney and Hannah, for all your support with this program. And then additionally, in co-sponsorship with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, will contribute about, I believe, $200,000 for the, towards the Emerald Ash Bore and working to replace the trees across the City of Columbus. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Page. And I know that also Councilmember Harden will be joining us in sponsorship of the, the program that you just mentioned, the lifting, the skill, the Learning Skills Lifting Neighborhoods Program. Councilwoman Harden's also supporting that initiative. Thank you. And so, now what we will do is we have a number of speakers here that will come up and speak on the 2017 capital budget. The first person is Sandra Jamison.
Good evening, Ms. Jamison.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Jamison, and I'm a historian/keeper of the culture for the James Preston Point Dexter Foundation and also Second Baptist Church. My interest is in the Point Dexter Village Museum and Cultural Arts Center. My main focus is on the man, Reverend James Preston Point Dexter, the person whose name was chosen to bear its name because of his many contributions to his fellow man, no matter what their race, and to the community. I'm sure most of the council members are aware of Reverend Point Dexter's accomplishments, but hope you all realize the need of a place to celebrate and educate adults as well as our children of this very special place in the history of our city. Point Dexter Village holds a special place in the city's history from its very beginning in 1940, through its talented residents and their contributions to Columbus, Ohio, and beyond. I'd like to share a newspaper article from the Ohio State News, June 1943. The governor of Ohio and the mayor of the city, and the elect, and the president greeted the president and the president-elect from Liberia, West Africa. They took on them a tour, and it is in President Roosevelt's Special Coach. And the first stop that they went to was Point Dexter Village. This is just a sample of the type of history in the African American community that we want to preserve and to share. There are former baseball teams that played across from the Union Station called the Blackbird Stadium. And I would like to see the museum get its history to be included in the publications about the City of Columbus in the coming years. And this is the newspaper, 1943. And that's where it discusses. And there are pictures of the other gentlemen that were along there. And also, you know, our wonderful library. This was a microfilm picture of the guys playing baseball. So, we have a lot of history about the different neighborhoods and books that have been published, and I want to make sure that they also include Point Dexter Village. So, that's my contest for this, this presentation. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Ms. Jamison. You're in support of it, you're in support of this new Point Dexter Museum and Cultural Arts Center?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Our next speaker will be Ms. Rita Smith.
Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. And I would like to say thank you, President Protam Tyson, Councilwoman Stenziano, and Councilwoman Ms. Page. I would, I'm thankful for this opportunity to share the community's concerns about the preservation and legacy of the Afro-American community, and how the city's 2017 capital budget can address some of our concerns. I'm Rita Smith, the chair of the James Preston Point Dexter Foundation, and I am extra excited about the recent events regarding the saving of the two original historic Point Dexter Village buildings, and our collaboration with the Ohio History Connection to become their 59th historic site in the state of Ohio. Also, I was extremely excited about Mayor Ginther's remarks in his State of the City speech, that the buildings will be saved and the city will make significant contributions to that effort. And I do hope that that is financial support. But however, the site negotiation process between OHC and CMHA is an ongoing, ongoing process, and it is essential, the transfer of the ownership to be completed in a timely manner so that the budget process for both the state's capital budget and the city's capital budget will ensure a timely implementation and development of the museum and the cultural learning center. The museum and the cultural learning center will be a positive addition to the community's revitalization. It will be an educational opportunity for our youth and adults, for the city and state. It will be an economic plus. It will support the arts, and it will honor all who have made great contributions to our city, state, and country. It will be a destination site for visitors and citizens of our community. But also, I have to speak with others in our community who have concern about the preservation of our other historic buildings that are meaningful to the Afro-American community. Every day, every day, we are losing more and more of our history and our story. Therefore, the city's commitment to invest in the saving, savings of the historic sites and elements of our Afro-American community is most encouraging. The director of the National Museum of Afro-American History and Culture in Washington, D.C., Lonny Butch Bunch III, shared with us, and I quote, "Place is not just a physical or geographic location, but it is where culture is made and histories and identities are created and recreated." So, I believe the symbol of hope will once again shine brightly in our city with your financial support. And also, I have, Ms. Jamison is a member of our foundation. Mr. Dotson is a member of our foundation. And also with us this evening, we have a young lady, Jamison, from OH, yes, OHC. So, it's small, small world, isn't it? So, but I thank you. I thank you for your support and commitment to our community. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. We would try.
Ms. Smith, we just, thank you. I know you've worked closely with Director Shoney and his team.
Yes.
I know both Hannah's have worked closely with you, and just appreciate Director Shoney's leadership.
Yes.
Certainly appreciate the mayor's leadership.
Yes.
This council, of course, this budget pass, as we're going to put in an additional $100,000 into this budget.
Thank you.
So, $1.1 million to support your effort. And again, I, I really do appreciate you and your team that have really been advocating for the, the buildings at Point Dexter and for this museum. I also see Jamison packed. Jamison, thank you for being in council chambers this evening. Thank you for supporting the work. Councilmember Stenziano has a few comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really want to echo your statements, the administration, Director Shoney, and kind of highlight the word you used in terms of collaboration. When we sat down early on, I, you know, there seemed some skepticism
Yes.
from you and your other foundation board members, but really want to compliment you all for what I felt was approaching it the right way, building the right partnerships, and then working with the administration and council. And so, proud to see that we got a wonderful resolution and the ongoing commitment from my colleagues to work together, and I look forward to continuing that collaboration as well.
Thank you. And we look forward to getting that ownership signed over so we can really fundraise. But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate the work of the Ohio History Connection. Thank you.
We're so thankful for their support and their wonderful staff, because if it weren't for their staff, I don't think we would be where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Motil. Joe Motil? Time. I think he's gone.
Yeah, we answered his question prior to the hearing. He had a real quick question. So, Steve and I were able to handle that. So, I think he decided to leave.
Thank you very much for that. All right. And the final speaker is Mr. Thomas Hefner. Good evening, Mr. Hefner. How are you today?
Good evening. Thank you, President Protam Tyson and city council members. Thank you. I am Tom Hefner, president of Franklinton Rising, a nonprofit organization working in the Franklinton neighborhoods of Columbus with a program to help alleviate poverty. And I'm happy to be here tonight just to thank the council and Director Shoney for awarding the monies in 2017. That was, jeez, that was $2 million, wasn't it, for 2018? Well, maybe I heard that incorrectly. But we were really at Franklinton Rising very excited about the, the grant program, Learning Skills Lifting Neighborhoods, for two reasons. First of all, it recognized that the city realizes that to change anything in the way of poverty is more than physical assets. People have to change, and it's hard. But changing and learning skills to help them get out of poverty is a big part. And so, your whole program addressed that very issue, and so, we were exceedingly pleased about that. Secondly, to make changes in, in the physical assets of property is very expensive. We're rehabbing houses and training young adults through that process, helping to prepare them for full-time careers in the building trades. And even our first house, knowing that we were, well, maybe more than a little, we were inefficient, we probably had $160,000, $70,000 in transforming a blighted, tear-down house to better-than-like-new conditions. $160,000, $70,000. That takes a lot of money because the banks appraised it at 73. So, it does require a lot of money, and so, we were greatly appreciative of having the support from the city. And all these projects are going to require, I'm sure, some support from the city in order to be successful. And the monies coming through this grant program are certainly going to be a big help to profitable or for-profit corporations as well as nonprofits who are working to improve skills and the physical assets. So, I thank you again, and thank you for an opportunity to even just share that. So, I thank you again and thank you for an opportunity to even just share that.
Thank you, Mr. Hefner. Councilman Page, do you have any comments or questions to Mr. Hefner?
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. Again, just to say congratulations and to thank you for the work that you're doing in the Franklinton community, particularly with the young people at Franklinton Preparatory Academy, I believe, and giving them an additional skill and life learning skills so that they can continue to grow. So, we appreciate all that you're doing and we look forward to you continuing to tell your story. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Protem and council members.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all the speakers who, for joining us tonight. And funding provided in the proposed budget will allow us to maintain the great quality of life we have in our city. In the coming years, we will continue to work for safe neighborhoods, job creation, economic development and strong public infrastructure. The capital improvements budget is scheduled to be on the council's agenda for passage on May the 15th and the hearing will begin at 5:00 PM. First of all, I want to thank my council colleagues who have worked hard to work with the administration on this budget and I thank them for their time and their effort. I want to thank the Finance Director, Joe Lombardi, and especially Rob Newman and Kyle Seifert, they're still in council chambers, thank you very much for working on this capital budget. I always want to thank Honor Houdorian, who's helped guide us all through these processes, Greg Davies, the mayor's chief of staff, the Finance Director, Joe Lombardi, tonight, Public Safety Deputy Director, Kate Pashati, from Development, Director Steve Shoney, from the Public Service, Assistant Director Steve Wenzel, from Public Utilities, Assistant Director Jonathan Lee, from Recreation and Parks, Fiscal Manager Steve Highland, and from Technology, Squin Jen Acribeto. And I also want to thank the Chief of Staff, Ed Roberts, to President Klein, excuse me, and the Legislative Research Director, Steve Kessler, Michael Kessler, Senior Legislative Advisor, Matt Erickson, and also my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, and lastly, CTV for making this hearing, hearing possible. I also want to take this opportunity to thank each of our council members again and their staff for their diligence, but lastly, I also want to thank the residents of Columbus. You're the reason our city is such a great place to live, work and to raise a family. And again, thank you for allowing each of us to serve. Hearing is adjourned. Thank you.